Welcome, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 13th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can I have a roll call please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the February 27th Meeting.
I move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move approval of the bills in the amount of $624,801.64, subject to the controller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. First thing we're gonna do is we're gonna have a, before we get to the public comments, we're gonna have a report from the Superintendent Jamie Benson for the school district. Come on up Jamie.
Paul, we appreciate the opportunity to talk and share a little bit about our upcoming April 3rd referendum.
If you want to go up here to the...
We respect and appreciate your providing us some time to do so. We also know you have a busy agenda and we don't want to overextend our welcome and so I'll try to be brief. I do want to mention, so that I don't forget, we have a wealth of information on our district website, including a video. It kind of gives you the big picture flyover, 10,000-foot view of what's included in the referendum. There's a PowerPoint that breaks down more of the finer detail and a host of some Q&amp;A documents and so on. Our efforts here are to be very transparent, open, and honest with the community and help people understand what the issues at play are within this April 3rd referendum where there will be two questions. The first one a $45.86 million ask and a second one a $2.1 million ask. I'll outline a couple of things included. First, within the first question, number one, really the issues are entirely focused on facility improvements, to want to be clear on that. This is a facility-related capital improvement referendum. And, you know, we annually dedicate frankly hundreds of thousands of dollars towards maintenance. This is not an issue of simply kicking the can down the road, that we've ignored some maintenance needs. The issues have grown however, to a point where we cannot stay on top of our growing needs based on our limited annual operating budget and so we need to ask our taxpayers for their support at this time. In front of you, you have a flyer like this and I'm gonna use it a little bit as my quick outline. I'm gonna jump on the inside cover. And identified here are kind of the four, we've summarized in four pieces, the four main components. So to add elementary classrooms, to create collaborative space, invest in our aging facilities, and to exit the 20s and 40s section of the academy building, which the term exit means that we are proposing that we would demolish the 20s and 40s section of the academy. We'd put an addition on to the 90s. We've been really trying to drive home and emphasize how much we all respect that property and how we exit this deserves the respectful approach that we have in mind to include things like, number one, we will continue to maintain and have a school at the site, at that location where there has been a school since 1854. Secondly, we want to preserve some of the contents of that building, keepsakes if you will, memorabilia. We're gonna do our very best to preserve some of the historical elements of that building. And the third piece is, we would like to do some videotaping inside and outside the building, perhaps do some interviews with alumnus, alumni, within the context of the video, and do some things very purposeful to preserve the history. As we turn the page in the chapter in the book related to those two older sections that are simply too costly for us to repair and maintain and upkeep. There's been a number of studies, engineering reports, architectural reports, various committees over the last 15, 20 years. And we're at a point in time where currently the 20s is used for nothing. The 20s is not a school. There's no education going on in there. There's no community use going on there. It's not used at all. Our 40s section is used today for part of our Montessori Elementary School, not a program, a school that has 186 students in that school, soon to grow next year to 200 students. So we would add on to the 90s section a couple of extra classrooms to accommodate for the growth and the needs at the Montessori with this respectful exit plan of the other two older sections of the academy building. Adding elementary classrooms is driven by some help and support from the city where we've identified our enrollment trend and the growth that we're gonna see in enrollment. We see the need to add elementary classroom space at what we think is a modest level. We do not need to add new classroom space at the middle school or the high school, but when I mention some help from the city, I'm referring to, as we looked at our own enrollment data, we also were blessed and fortunate to get some information from the city related to housing development, population trend and growth, and applied that in conjunction with our enrollment trend data to try to make the appropriate determination on the amount of space that we would need and strategically which schools would experience the most growth. We're only putting on one school at Rocky, or one classroom, excuse me, at Rocky Branch. We're only putting on one classroom, full-size classroom at West Side. We're adding four full-size classrooms at Greenwood. We're also adding flexible, large group collaborative space within each of those buildings. A big theme, a big desire that our board had with their approach to the referendum had to do with, first, identify the needs for our students and staff so that we can advance ourself, maintain our facilities and so on. But secondary to that, as we go through this process, what are some advantages that we can build in for our community? And so with this large group flexible space at the elementary schools, we will be able to have robotic league, Lego league, maker space, large group, small group instruction, a variety of different activities for today's learner that requires new and different space. But it will also serve as our kids' club would go into this new flexible space after school, which would free up a great amount of gym space for our community. There's other elements. At the middle school, an example would be, we need to tear up and remove. You'll see on the video, I refer to it looks like an earthquake hit, the tennis court at the middle school. We have to get rid of it and start over. And as we start over, we're gonna put in a couple pickleball courts as well as tennis courts and maybe a basketball hoop on the end. We see a great amount of community benefiting from that kind of application in this referendum as well. We're gonna have some improvements to lighting and sound within our auditorium. There's some community use and involvement there. Our running track needs to be resurfaced both indoor and out. We have, you'd be amazed at the amount of people that are using our track indoor, in some cases right now, in this kind of weather. And so there's these advantages that we're trying to build in for our community along the way as well. As we're also addressing our facility infrastructure needs, our space needs of... Steady enrollment looks like about 1.6% annual growth. That doesn't sound like a big number, but right now we have roughly 3,400 students in our school district and when you apply 1.6% to that, we're basically looking at 25, 30 students a year. That's the equivalent of a classroom. So with these modest additions of space, we also would add on some special education space as well as those other full-size classrooms I described, which will allow us to repurpose. Currently, today, we're using large, full-size classroom in two of our elementaries inefficiently for small group instruction. By adding on some smaller instructional space, we will free up and be able to repurpose some existing space, which is one of the reasons why we don't have to add on quite as many classrooms. We can make better use of some of our existing space. I'm going fast, sorry, but I'm trying to give you the quick and dirty without taking too much time. Some district technology, infrastructure, and safety-related improvements. Tax implications. Tax implications of question one will be $41 per $100,000 value of your home. And so you can do the math from there. The table in your handout illustrates if you have a $200,000 house, double the 41. If you have a $300,000 house, triple the 41 and so on. I believe we're pretty accurate in stating that the average home value here is about $250,000 and so we're asking for a $100 bill for question one on an annual basis for some major improvements. And the reason why we're able to accomplish that much for the minimal impact, tax impact, is because we are retiring significant amount of debt right now. And by retiring some debt levy, it will help to minimize the tax impact on that first question. That's due to some purposeful planning of which you folks are certainly well aware of what it takes to do some of that. That's some purposeful planning on the part of our school board. Two members here tonight, Stacy Johnson Myers, Board President, and Mike Stifter, also our high school principal, Kit Litke, here as well. Question two, back 40 behind the high school, literally 40-plus acres. We would like to put in artificial turf surrounded by lights and add a parking lot way out in the backside of the back 40. We have baseball and softball fields back there. If you are a spectator, whether you're a visitor from out of town, or whether you're grandma and grandpa, aunt and uncle, or mom and dad from this community, you park your car up by the high school and you get your aerobic workout, hiking all the way to the back to watch those games. And we want to make that right. We want to fix that and make that a better arrangement for our spectators. Question two, 2.1 million, artificial turf surrounded by lights with parking. Artificial turf, multiple use, multiple sports. It's not just for football. We could get out early with our spring sports, softball and baseball. When frost is coming out of the ground, it's too muddy and we can't get out to practice. We could be on artificial turf, taking batting practice infield, outfield, you name it. Marching band, we have a rich tradition and pride of excellence at our high school with our marching band and we'd like to have a better facility for them to continue to use in that regard with artificial turf. Certainly a wide array of youth sports, community use as well, and of course, traditional soccer, football, and so on. The list is endless. This would be a multiple flexible-use facility, artificial turf. 2.1 million is a $9 tax impact per $100,000 value of your home. If you take a look at that, it seems like $9 for 2.1 doesn't seem to line up very well. If it only cost me $41 for 45.86 million, that seems, those numbers don't jive. That's because the school board is purposefully leveraging all of the debt retirement towards question one to help to minimize the tax impact. And they're leaving question number two as a standalone issue, not benefiting from the debt retirement to alleviate or minimize the tax impact. Three more public forums. We will hold seven. We've already held four. Reminder, March 21 at 7:00 in the morning, District Office. March 21 again at 12:00 noon in the District Office. And our last one will be March 27 at 6:00 PM in the Meyer Middle School Library. And that'll finish out our seven public forums. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thanks Superintendent Benson.
Thanks again for your time. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you our excitement around this. So thanks a lot.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, next we'll have a report from Chris Blazias, who is the CEO of the River Falls Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. I wish I had some fun flyers to hand out, but I don't, so. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to spend a few minutes here tonight. Each year around this time, I like to share updates in regard to what we have taking place in 2018. So I'd like to start by saying some thank yous. The events that I'll be talking about in a few minutes would not be possible without hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that are supporting us, as well as countless hours of support from your city staff. So first and foremost, thank you very much for that support. It seems like just yesterday I was here talking about 2017. I saw the first robin a few minutes ago and it's spring and we're rolling forward with all of our community events now. So coming up this Saturday, March 17, we'll be painting the town green as we celebrate St. Patrick's Day. So very similar to previous years, our River Falls Leprechauns will have an opportunity to participate in pot-of-gold medallion hunts. We can enjoy some potato soup samples. And we have a chance to enjoy people racing down the street with beds on wheels. So always, always a favorite. This is also one of our three open container requested events for the year. This is where adult beverages can be carried onto the streets or onto the sidewalks as long as they are contained within a blue chamber-supplied cup that has been served by a participating establishment. While there's no direct support from the City of River Falls for our eighth annual River Falls Roots and Bluegrass Festival, I'd like to briefly share a little bit of information on that. I continue to say that this is probably our River Falls residents' best-kept secret because not many people are aware of it. It will kick off April 13 through the 15 with a beer and wine tasting event that will be held at Junior's Restaurant and Tap House. This will be an opportunity for people to sample 60 different products. And with the support of the ticket sales for this event, as well as vendor, or as well as venues who are paying for bands to participate in this festival, we have over 40 hours of free music that is available for our residents and visitors of our town. Throughout those three days, you can enjoy, of course, the live music. We've got competitions, workshops, jam sessions, and the fun part of it is, it's located at various retail shops. You can see it at the grocery store, bars, and restaurants throughout the weekend at various times and locations. So it's a very fun event. I encourage you to check it out if you have not had a chance to. This year, River Falls Days will be held July 13 through the 15 at the same location, right across from City Hall within Heritage Park. Much of our focus this year has been in regard to strategic planning, to make sure that our resources are being utilized to the greatest ability. Following numerous community conversations, we pledge to maintain the strong tradition surrounding this festival that our community has come to love and enjoy, while we seek new opportunities for improvement. While many of the details are still being finalized, attendees can anticipate changes in regard to the core festival layout by incorporating daytime family-friendly activities as well as the energetic evening bands into a more centralized location. We'll also be looking to increase activities and take advantage of Maple Street, as well as shifting times and dates of some of our favorite activities so that we can create a full three days of activities for family and friends to continue to gather. As we look to the future, these strategic conversations will continue with the need to move the carnival to a new location, but that won't take place until 2019. As with every event, we continue to maintain our commitment to create a safe environment and to do so, we'll be providing our ongoing responsible server training that we require or ask of our volunteers each year. We will again coordinate to car cruises along Main Street. They coincide with River Falls Days and Bacon Bash. Last year, we received record attendance for both of those events and would anticipate the same in 2018. And then there's Bacon Bash. So similar attendance is anticipated for this sixth annual event. I have a hard time believing that it's been six years already. But we continue to anticipate over 11,000 bacon fanatics converge upon our community and that will take place September 15 and 16. So not only is this event putting River Falls on the map locally, we continue to see the food vendors that participate in our events successfully compete in the World Food Championship. So if you're not familiar with that, it's similar to the Super Bowl for those foodie fanatics in the world. So again, this fall, we look forward to sending one of our lucky competitors to Orange Beach, Alabama, and compete in the bacon category. So that's pretty fun to follow. I'd also like to share a couple of smaller but very impactful opportunities that take place here in our community. Businesses will again be able to greet our ghosts and goblins for a trick-or-treat event that we started last year during the afternoon of October 31. Also held in October is our Ladies Night Out, which is a shopping excursion that has continued to grow in popularity. Both of these community events provide the opportunity for additional exposure for the great things we have taking place along our downtown mainstream. River Dazzle, which is just crazy to even be thinking about, but will again happen in 2018, the day after Thanksgiving, maintains a tradition alongside with Santa and Mrs. Claus, will continue to have the chili crawl as well as the lighted parade. At this time, I would like to express another appreciation from the residents, visitors, and especially the downtown businesses for the beautiful lighting that we saw along Main Street. That we've received a lot of great feedback and I want to pass that on to the people who deserve that. So, so thank you very much. They probably would not let me back into the Chamber office if I didn't put a short plug for volunteers. As I started the conversation, these events are not possible without the support of so many volunteers. So if you or someone you know has an interest in being part of the planning conversation of all of these events, or want to work a shift, or maybe 20 shifts, we'd love to talk to you. So please consider calling us. To close, I'd like to again express my sincere appreciation to all of you. We've got some extremely valuable partnerships that we have between the Chamber and the city and these events would not be successful without their support. So thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions, or we could wait further along in the agenda as well.
Well, they can. Anybody have any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we have one more report. Greg Peters, who is the president of the River Falls Baseball Council, will give us a little report.
Hi, my name's Greg Peters. I'm the president of the River Falls Baseball Council. And while I was, Chris has a perfect blend of, she's easy to listen to, and I'd heard some of the stuff before, so I apologize for my mind wandering, Chris, but sometimes I'm like a dog chasing a squirrel sometimes. But if you look in the very, the front picture that you have on your packet, and I literally just sort of realized this a couple minutes ago. There's a tall drink of water. He has a white t-shirt on and some sunglasses and he's the tallest guy in the picture. It's almost directly in the center of the picture of all the people there. And that is our, and I just noticed that's our city administrator, Mr. Scott Simpson. And I think it is ironic that our city administrator is right in the center of this photo because the City of River Falls is literally at the center of this partnership that we have with the River Falls Baseball Council. And we've, you know, I mean, obviously the facility is built and so if you go, there's about, there's a six-page packet that I have and that I put together for all of you. And there's a, it goes over a little bit and I'll go over our current financial standing we have. And this year, you know, 2017 and 2018 have been, I've been involved in the River Falls Baseball Council. This is my third year. I was president last year, this year, and then before I was on the council. Right when we started, we had a little bit of new blood in there and we had, we were pretty much kind of scraping the bottom of the checkbook barrel, you know, come January and February. And it was fine. It wasn't like we were in danger of not paying a mortgage or anything on it. But we've done some, I felt we've done some good things. Our checking account balance is just under, just over $24,000 right now. And we have, this is kind of before a lot of our sponsorship influx money will be coming in from 2018. So I think in actuality, we're, you know, we're probably around a little closer to 40. Our current loan balance at First National Bank is $235,513 and that started at $300,000 on March 25 of 2014. We have about, there's about nine more years to go if we pay it, you know, as we're supposed to. I'm looking at the things that we're gonna do in the next four to five years. I think that loan will be paid off in five years. I think six years at the very latest. And if you go into, just a little, a few things from our 2017 highlights, there's a picture of the St. Paul Saints high-fiving some of the kids after the game. We had a very successful, again, the St. Paul Saints came and played at our park and they played our River Falls, the Fighting Fish, and then an all-star team from that, you know, from their conference, from their league. That event garnered about $15,000 in net revenue. We did have, there was a lot of expenses to put the game on, but you know, like I said, it was a, I think it was a win-win for the River Falls Baseball Council and our community as a whole. We had over 200, we had about 2,500 people there. I would say, there was a good chunk of people from River Falls, but most were from out of town. And last year, we hosted over 100 games at the field. A small portion of them, we definitely had hosted a lot of practice time, but so the youth did get to use it. We had about over 15, we had 15 youth games. This year in 2018, I'm excited. We're gonna have some youth tournaments there. So we're gonna have over 40 games. We could have more, but right now we have over 40 scheduled. And when I say youth, I mean, we have the 14-year-old baseball program, that age. Last year in 2017, we hosted a, First National Bank put it on, they hosted a movie night at our ballpark. We also hosted numerous church events, church services at the ballpark, you know, AM church services. Another thing that I'm proud of is that we, even though River Falls Baseball, the council is a nonprofit organization ourselves, there is a lot of people out there and it's a lot of people from the community and we give them a venue and a platform to promote their nonprofit organization. So there was, there was 26 Fighting Fish games last year and every game has a business sponsor which they paid to do that. They paid $250 to be the sponsor that particular night. And then we also have a nonprofit organization and they're allowed to do whatever they want for the most part. They market and promote their organization as they see fit. What's gonna change in 2018, it's on your expectations for, on the last page. The 2018 expectations, we're gonna change it up a little bit, I think, for the better. We obviously do, you know, need to garner more funds to help pay our loan down, but we're gonna use that, we used to do, you know, whether it be donorship solicitations or, you know, 50/50 raffle or things like that at the Fish Games and those went to the ballpark fund, operating expenses. We're gonna let the, in return for the nonprofit organizations working in the concession stand, we're gonna let them, you know, take that, those funds and they can kind of do whatever they want. So it is a, you know, a true, a true place for our city to gather and meet and have fun and do business at the same time. So one of the things, I'll just touch on a couple of things, some improvements. We did install a new sound system. Actually, I mean, I have it on the 2018 expectations, but it's actually already done. And so that was $5,000. We purchased that through Brickhouse Music. Tom Benz put that in. His staff put that in for us. It's, we're excited about the PA system. It's top of the line for this type of facility. We're gonna have an $8,000 fence installed from St. Croix Fence, which is in the area. And that's not the outfield fence, but the sideline fences there, they were, you know, we had, when the field was, when the facility was built, you had, you know, we had to give and take on a few items and we had a, basically a residential fence at a commercial-type setting. So it's, it's done. We're gonna put that in at, in the fall of, right after the season's done. We're gonna get one more summer out of it and then do it. We're very excited, have had talks with some of the members, you know, in City Hall here and the Chief of Police and there'll be some meetings between now and September. We're gonna host the Grand Slam Jam. It's, we're gonna have basically a concert out at the park and center field is where the stage will be. We're gonna cap it at 2,500 people. The reason for that is we've, we've sort of been there, done that. We've hosted 2,500 people before. We know we can handle the parking and the restrooms and the trash facilities and all that stuff. So we're excited about that. For anybody that, we're gonna have the Gear Daddy's, Four on the Floor, Firewater Gospel Choir, so that's a local band. And actually, Four on the Floor, if you ever saw any of the KAR11 commercials before the Super Bowl, that was the band that played on that commercial. So they're a Twin Cities band. Gear Daddy's are across the river too, but they, and they've been around for a long time. We're excited about that. We do expect, you know, obviously, a percentage of River Falls people to attend that concert, but we... but we, again, it's also... We think it's going to bring quite a few people to the area for a couple-day span. Like I said, I did have it on the 2018 expectations. We've been working pretty well with the River Falls Youth Baseball Organization, and we're going to have quite a few... Quite a bit more games out there for those kids. We're excited about that. But we're also excited... One of the headaches of our operation is the concession stand, and it's not anything. It's not rocket science. It's just... That's probably the least fun thing of the whole thing, and actually, River Falls Youth Baseball, we've developed a good partnership with them, too, to help out, use the field, help... It's been a win-win for a lot of organizations, so that's about all I had tonight. The one last thing I do expect, this is a... It's an estimate, but I expect that, you know, with concession stands, you know, buying buns and plates and napkins and, you know, Coke... We have a contract with Coke in town here. We'll spend about $75,000 locally, just in concession products and beverages and things, so I do think it's a... It's an entity that has been... That provides a good service, but also does, you know, help our local economy. And like I said, you know, from the get-go, with looking at that picture on the very front of the packet, it's, you know, our city administrator and our city council is at the very center of this partnership, and for that, we're very appreciative.
Questions? Anybody have any questions for Greg?
Greg, how many... What season will this will be at the new ballpark, or at the ballpark?
We had... This will be season number six.
Six. And you know what I really love about the ballpark? I'm a big baseball guy, but what I really enjoy going to the baseball games for is the community. It's not... There's people there watching the game, but the interaction and people not on their internets and on Facebook, or looking at social media, I think this is probably one of the greatest community communication devices we have in this city, and I love it, and I hope we can continue to work with you and you work with us and make this just continue to grow, so call it baseball, call it whatever, but it's a great community gathering place.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jeff. It's a... I agree with you 100%. It's... I think it's a good gathering place, and there is a... Like you said, the... You know, you have to kind of put your phone away, because, you know, you've got to watch for foul balls, so that kind of...
Yeah.
That helps out. But it's a... There is... There is a lot. I can't tell you how many times I'm just out there, and as... Really, as a community member, not a... Not the RFBC president, but... And you, you know, you end up talking to a lot of different people from a lot of different variations of the town, and it is... You're right. I mean, some of it is just friendship talk and social, but some of it also is, you know, business-related and things that help the city, and hey, can you... Hey, you know, can you help us out volunteering here and stuff like that? But yeah, no, I agree. I appreciate that comment, Jeff.
Anybody else? Well, thanks, Greg. You guys are doing a great job out there. Keep it up.
Yep, thanks a lot. We appreciate it.
Okay, now, we can move on to public comments. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to talk about? Come on up.
Evening. Mike Reardon, IT coordinator. I just wanted to take a minute tonight to recognize our wizard behind the curtain back here, Dennis Sildreth. Unfortunately, this is his last council meeting. He's leaving us to pursue another job opportunity, so he spent 12 years with media services and many, many nights in that control room, recording meetings on evenings when the rest of us are home, watching on Channel 16. So I just wanted to thank him for his service. He's going to be a loss for us, so I just wanted to say thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Dennis. Okay, anybody else? Okay, nobody else, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The first one is a resolution approving River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for city assistance for special events in 2018. Next one is a resolution authorizing release of easements for 1567 Sullivan Court. This resolution will approve the release of two easements, which are no longer needed, and will help clear the title for the property. Next one is a resolution approving development agreement with Michelle Mayer from the River Falls Theater. This would go toward... This agreement would go towards the developers' agreement, and the funds that would go toward the theater renovation, and then the city completing some infrastructure improvements associated with this project. Next one is a resolution approving budget adjustments for the same project, for the Falls Theater. Number eight is a resolution approving revised state municipal agreement for a highway safety improvement project, which would be South 35 and the division, the Jug Handle intersection. Next one would be a resolution approving land lease with UW River Falls Outman Valley. This would be a lease agreement with the university for approximately 80 acres of agriculture land. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent Agenda item number four.
I'd like to pull number five, please.
Number eight.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Might be easier to figure out what we did want to pull.
Yeah.
Six and seven.
You wanted...
Five?
I wanted five.
Sean wanted... Okay.
Four.
Five.
Somebody else wanted?
Eight.
Eight?
I want a nine.
Yep, going to fight over the last two. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the two there to left.
I'll move to approve items six and seven on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Or any discussion? Now, seeing as one is a budget adjustment, do we have to do a roll call on that?
Mm-hmm.
Can't hear. Can't hear. Well, can you just do a roll call? Both of them together?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Christie, can you do a roll call, please? For six and seven?
Bjork.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Morset.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just go down the list here. Mr. Downing, you pulled number four.
Resolution approving River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau request for the city assistance for special events for 2018. I really appreciate all the Chamber events we have in the city. I have one concern, and I'm not entirely sure, because I couldn't find it in the municipal code, but maybe someone could help me answer some of these questions I have. For River Falls Days, it can sometimes go rather late. I think that they did a better job last year, but I'm curious how long they plan on having that ordinance for noise being lifted, because 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m. in the morning is, you know, completely unacceptable. You know, I could see maybe 11:00 or midnight, you know, 11:00 corresponding, so it ends on midnight, or midnight itself. I'm just kind of curious what other people think, or if there's information that maybe I'm lacking to understand this a little better.
I... What is it... What do we have... What does the resolution say exactly? I know this is an exemption of that.
Yeah, the resolution... In your general noise ordinance, which is Chapter 8, 28, there's specific prohibition against loud radios, yelling, shouting, hooting, whistling, or singing, and that ordinance basically says that when it bothers the peace of other people, it can be a violation. And then it specifically says the city council can make exceptions for parades. I think there's a list of things, parades, events, and other things. So you're... What you are allowing is the Chamber to operate their event with an exception to that noise ordinance for the entirety of their event, and we're not setting... The city, through this resolution, isn't setting hours for their event. They set the hours for their event, and we're giving an exception for that. It's within the council's power to limit the time, the day, the place, if they choose, but that's not what this resolution does.
And Chris, you guys are normally done by midnight or 1:00 at the latest with bands, right?
Yeah. Fridays, 1:00. Saturdays, 1:00.
Yeah.
And that's been consistent for the five years.
Right, and I don't think we've had any problem with that up until now.
This event's been going on for longer than I can remember.
Yep.
And it's two nights out of the year. I think the town appreciates it. We get a lot of people coming home to River Falls that enjoy visiting with people who still live here. I think we attract a lot of out-of-town business, and I think two nights a year is not too much to ask. I think people know what to expect, and 1:00 and 1:30 is not, in my mind, too late.
With the new... I guess I got a question on that. With the new location that we've been using right here, have we had any major issues? I'm not looking for, like, specific names or anything, but have we had any major complaints from adjacent neighbors, or...
Yes, I mean, we've had complaints from adjacent neighbors.
Same as we've had down where it used to be.
Yeah. But this is more of a residential area than what it has been in the past, when it was at First National and all those apartments there, so this does have... With this being Alderman Downing's district, I'm sure he does hear firsthand that, from the residents, that encompass that area, so... And Chris, so you said it was 1:00 and 1:30, and that's... And Alderman, Morset, I agree with you. It's been going on for a long time, and I don't know if it's something that we need to be a little more cautious of, and maybe consider or courteous, maybe we look at, and when I say "we," maybe Chamber needs to look at that differently and say it's 12:30 and 1:00 o'clock or something. I don't know.
You know, for me, I, you know, if you're having a party, you can take it inside at midnight. You don't have to stop, but just, you know, be mindful that there's people who do need to work the next morning, you know, and people who are elderly who want their sleep. Everyone is entitled to their sleep. I don't think, you know... I'm not saying you have to stop anything, but I think midnight's a pretty safe time zone, considering how close it is to the residential side of my district. I would encourage, you know, the Chamber to consider midnight and then bringing it inside at that point, myself or my district, so...
If I may... If I may ask, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, it sounds like these concerns are also something that could happen outside of a discussion about this resolution, since there... As I recall, there aren't any time limits in the resolution, and of course, they have to abide by our ordinances.
I think the Chamber has done... Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so this is a conversation that maybe we don't have to have around this resolution.
I agree. I do have a further question, though. Mayor Tolan, on this resolution, are we asking that the Chamber does not have to come back on a yearly basis now, or we're...
No, they come back every year.
But I thought, Chris, were you not asking for that to be changed? If I read it incorrectly, or...
No, I don't... I think it just...
Mayor, if...
Oh, yeah, come on up. Sorry, Chris.
Thought it was being asked.
I interpreted it that, yeah, that the request would not have to come back unless the council decided that it needed to.
And I have issues with that. I would prefer that they come back every year with it, just because of having these open dialogues and conversations and whatever little things could happen, but go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, my understanding is that there's been conversation with city staff that we've had, that I'm making the same requests every year, and to be mindful and more efficient of everybody's time, that that would be something to consider, that we wouldn't need to come forward for requests for those ordinance variances every year, but I would still plan to come and provide updates on an annual basis. Just a couple of things in regard to what Mr. Downing was talking about. Just to clarify that neighborhood perception, I would maybe challenge that with the new location. When we were at First National Bank, there were residents within that same proximity as we currently have. It's not easy when you're living right next to it, and we understand that, and we try to be mindful of that. We have made some modifications in regard to having conversations with the bands that we come in. We've had conversations with Brick House on Main Street, asking them how we can minimize some of those noises. So we've made some steps in that direction. We have had ongoing conversations in regard to what the ending time is. So one thing to keep in mind, as we have those conversations, is that however you want to look at it, pros or cons, the funding source for River Falls Days primarily comes in those later hours, so we need to keep that in mind. So those are the sources that help us bring the fireworks and help us bring the bands for the parades as well. So just something to keep in mind as you continue to have conversations in those areas.
I'll make another comment, given some experience I've had on the Chamber Board. Not all the noise that comes, the music noise, comes from the band that the Chamber puts out. There are other bands downtown, some of the establishments downtown have bands that are in that back alley. At times, those contribute to that noise factor, and the Chamber can't control that. That's not their fault. So it's, you know, if we're looking at the noise issue, I think we need to look at the whole issue, not just what the Chamber's up to.
I think, yeah, and I agree with that sentiment of Councilmember Morset. It is the back alley is probably what I'm actually hearing over in my district. It does carry seven to eight blocks away. Maybe we could take a harder look at that in the future. I don't think we can resolve it tonight. I think it's going to have to be a thought-out plan that's put in front of us, that keeps in mind that we do want the Chamber to be successful, but we do want to minimize the impact it has on the surrounding neighborhoods. So I think that might be the focus of what Mr. Morset was pointing out, might actually be a good way of looking at that, and I appreciate that.
And it is just two nights a year, so...
Yep.
I still would like to strike, though, the point where Alderman and Watson, maybe you could read that, or just say what we're looking to strike.
There is a section, "Whereas approval for city assistance for all Chamber events will continue annually by way of informational correspondence," so on and so forth, until the council deems necessary to revisit that.
And that's what I'd like to strike.
Put it in the form of a motion.
I'd like to put it in the form of a motion, to have the whereas is what Alderman Watson just read struck from the resolution.
Second.
Okay, so I've got a first and a second on that. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
Could we read it in full real quick?
Yep. Want to read it again, Hal?
Yep.
This is all we're striking. So it's still everything there. It's up striking this.
Okay.
The resolution would be amended to remove the whereas clause. Whereas approval for city assistance for all Chamber events will continue annually by way of informational correspondence by the Chamber, outlining the dates, times, and needs until come and council deems necessary to revisit the Chamber's request at a future time.
Which will mean they still got to come back to us every year and do this.
That's right, but, you know, we got a... My comment on that would just be, you know, it can be on the consent agenda if someone has a problem with it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've got a first and a second on that. Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, is there any more... Is there any more discussion on the resolution itself? Okay? I'll entertain a motion on that, then.
I move approval for Consent Agenda item number four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, go on to...
Five.
Five. That was with Mr....
Me.
Was that you?
Yep. Mr. Morset. I'll be quick. I'm looking at the resolution. I'm in favor of the modifications to the easements that are in... That are being removed. I just felt that the resolution should reflect the additional easement that gets put in place or replaces Section B. So I did work with staff this afternoon, and I've got some modifications in a resolution that I'd like the council to consider. The first one would be in the title of the resolution, changing it from "release of easement" to "modification of easement." The second would be adding a whereas as number three to say, "Whereas a replacement easement in favor of the city will be granted as a replacement for Release B." And the third would be in the now, therefore, after the document number for Release B,[1698.73] Um, the first one would be in the title of the resolution, changing it from release, uh, of easement to modification of easement. Uh, the second would be adding, uh, a whereas as number three to say whereas a replacement easement in favor of the city will be granted as a replacement for release B. And the third would be, uh, in the now, therefore, after the document number, uh, for release B, the addition would be and replacement easement for parcel number two-seven-six dash one-zero-four-three dash three-zero dash one-zero-zero. So I would like to make a motion that we, uh, accept, uh, that we, um, consider the modifications to that resolution.
I think they're good.
Any other discussion?
I just have a quick question. What's the purpose for the other, for the, the, uh, second easement?
Well, what they, my understanding is, is there were two easements that kinda ran right down the middle of the parcel, and these needed, those needed to be taken away so that the property could be fully developed.
Right.
The replacement B, B was a larger parcel, sort of to the west of that parcel, and essentially, I'm oversimplifying it probably, but they're gonna narrow that down to just an easement so that we can get utilities up the side along the road.
So there's a need for it?
There's a need for it, yes, yeah. So I, I just, it, we already have the easement, it's in the packet. I just felt that the resolution should reflect it. That's all I'm doing.
Thank you.
That's good.
Okay, so I got a first and a second on number five, right?
Right. Well, you, you gotta vote him out.
I'm the amendment.
Oh, that's right. Motion to amend first. Did you make a motion on that?
Yes.
I got a second?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go back to the resolution itself.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve resolution releasing, uh, authorizing, uh, release or modification of easements for fifteen sixty-seven Sullivan Court as amended.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's see, Mr. Gagne, you pulled number eight.
I just had a clarifying question for, on that. Uh, it looks like we're looking to approve option two. Um, and on that, I knew we had kind of in conjunction with the same project, uh, Hoffman Park. Um, when they bring that jug handle down and align it with that street, is that gonna be, um, at the same point that we need to make a new entrance to the park? Is that correct?
Yes and no. The master plan shows some pretty significant changes to the transportation within the area. City engineer Ronzky's here and talk a little bit further, but there's gonna be modifications we're gonna have to do with the, um, with Hanson Drive at the time they do it, but there was some plans, um, for more changes to circulation and parking, and we wouldn't necessarily have to do that at the time, but you're gonna have some change in traffic movements. The entrance stays at Hanson Drive.
The entrance stays, uh, the entrance gets modified. It will come off the jug handle for the time being. The master plan for Hoffman Park envisioned a significantly realigned entrance coming in off of, um, Division Street opposite Woson. So, time will tell.
So when they do this project, it's not gonna impact our entrance exit?
Well, it'll impact it all right, but it'll, it'll stay open.
That's something that's gonna be at a cost to the city above and beyond what this is? And that'll become.
No, that's all part of the project. You, you know, it's, it's all part of the project. The DOT is paying all the construction on this, including turnlades down our local road, but they are asking for us to deal with the property and, um, I think I laid out in there this, you know, uh, I think we don't have enough detail yet on the design to know, um, if we'll completely take the properties or not, but, uh, but that's, that's what the agreement is set up for, if we need that, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. I move for the approval of, uh, number eight in the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we have Mr. Bjork with number nine.
Yep, just real quick on that. So on that property that we're looking at going down, um, to the X number of acres, is that including the shed that's in there too? And then I thought it was interesting that we went from, it's always been five-dollar increments that we went up, and we decided to go up only a three-dollar increment this time, but that's a side note, but is the shed included in this?
Yeah, the, the building has been.
Yeah, the, the building is part of that, um, rent?
It has been in the past. Have we modified it?
I think that was part of the rules where they couldn't pay for a building, if you remember that. So, I, I, I guess I'm not sure if the shed's in this or not. I don't think they're paying anything extra for it.
They're not paying anything extra for it. So, okay, it's because I was thinking, wow, those rates are more than fair or whatever, but then if you're getting a shed, then they're really very beneficial to the university, but, um, hmm, so it could include that shed.
They're, they're not too far.
I'd like to know if it's including it or not before I, um, mix kind of a difference on what.
Sorry, I don't know if it includes the shed. But the, the rates that others in the area are paying are not too far off from the two-eighty-three?
I know, but they're not getting a shed.
Mr. Choos from the farm is here. He might know, um, if they've been using it. I believe that the shed was being used.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Sure it is anymore.
And I agree, they're decent rates for just land, but if it's a shed, that's, that's a different ballgame.
It is my understanding that the shed is part of the package, so to speak, and I think there's a, there's some kind of a state policy against renting of building.
Okay.
So this, if the past, from what I, I'm going off of, uh, information that's been passed on to me very recently, I don't know a lot of the background, but from what I understand, because of that policy that the state has about renting facilities, that the city had, in the past, was willing to roll the building into the land lease
Okay.
to get around that conflict that the state has.
Okay, fair enough. How much more can you afford over the one-hundred-and-thirty-eight an acre?
The university.
Can, can you get on the Chicago Board and drive up our commodity rates?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
That's, that's what's driving, that's what's driving it. Uh, I met, I met personally with Mike Stifter and, uh, the city had proposed a, a rate hike, and he and I negotiated and, and settled and agreed on, on what's in front of you tonight, so. I appreciate, the university appreciates working with the city, and we look forward to continuing that, so.
Yep. Thanks. Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, uh, uh, somebody else I have to.
Mayor, I move for the approval of number nine on the consent agenda.
Second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Okay, next we'll move on to, uh, the administrator's report. If anybody has anything for Scott, or Scott, if you have anything for us.
Well, I'll, uh, I will not be at the next council meeting, but we'll assure that you have plenty of work to do while I'm not here, so, um, Julie will be, uh, presiding, um, as the assistant city administrator at that meeting. Um, I'll be available, um, leading to the, the week leading up to that, um, for questions or, or things you wanna chat about. We've had quite a bit of interest in, in the corporate parks. I just mentioned that, um, I too saw Robin today, so that was. Well, I should, I, to be fair, it was pointed out to me, cause I probably wouldn't have been, uh, paying attention to it, but, uh.
Was Chris the one who pointed it out to you? She ran up to your office?
It was my spouse, so, um, but certainly the building activity, people are starting to think about it, in particular corporations. This is in their cycle now to start be thinking about projects they wanna get underway, um, for eighteen, so we're, we're starting to, we've sent about six, our request for informations, that's kind of our sending information about our lots when it's requested. Um, we've sent about six of those out in the last, um, two, two or three weeks. So there's been pretty heavy interest in the existing lots that we have, um, in the community, and, and there's certainly been interest in kinda what the future holds for Mann Valley. In, in addition, we've had discussions with, in the last two months with quite a few residential developers, primarily for existing, um, area that's already been preliminary platted, um, so it hasn't been related to annexations or other, other expansions, but, uh, starting to get, um, I guess ancies probably the right word to use with them, to try to get things going. Uh, lot inventory in River Falls is very low. We do expect that we'll be able to release the housing study, um, from the consultant in about two to three weeks. Here it'll be finalized, hopefully the sooner of those two dates, um, and then that's scheduled for a presentation to the city council at the second meeting in April. So there'll be some more information to add to our mix of information about what's happening in the housing market. The, uh, two, two big projects, there was three projects proposed in River Falls for tax credits. The project, the fifty-plus unit, uh, senior housing next to City Hall, the seven-hundred North Main Street, which was about, I believe it was seventy to eighty units of, um, workforce housing.
South Main Street.
South Main, sorry. And then there was another rehab project. The rehab project did get funded, um, made the list initially. The other two are what, uh, I believe it's called Hold. So they were qualifying projects, but didn't make it to the point list, um, for initial funding. There's been a lot of, um, moving parts at the state capitol and the federal government related to that, which means there may be some additional credits, so we're kind of on hold to see how those projects come through. But it looks like there's a possibility that those projects might try to push forward, um, uh, this year. So, it's been a good, uh, a good start to the spring. Um, as you know, from your experience on the council, you know, a lot of these were conversations that were had two years ago or a year ago, and now are starting to, to kinda get some momentum going through. We do have elections coming up again, so I believe, um, there's information in the packet about when, uh, in-person absentee balloting starts, um, which I think is next week, next Monday. And that would include the, uh, local offices plus the school referendum, um, and state, some state offices, county elections and others. So that'd be in-person absentee ballots starting, um, Monday, and the election is, is the Wednesday after, um,
Tuesday.
The, or, I'm sorry, the Tuesday after Easter. So people should keep in mind that if they're on.
Those who are up for election would really like that date to be correct.
Hey, it's always a Tuesday, at least as long as I've been, been doing this, so April third is the election. I'd be happy to provide any other answers to questions that might have been in.
I, I have a question. Um, how's the dog park planning coming along, and is a township, uh, relationship working out fairly decent at this point? The reason I ask is cause I like talked to a lot of people, and they seemed really jazzed about it.
Speaking of the concept of putting a, a dog park at, at the county FF property the city owns, um, some of which was a former landfill, um, at this point, we're waiting for the DNR to get back to us about the concept, which they've approved in other places, so it shouldn't be, um, new to us. But, and we have had good conversations with the township about partnership in some way, financial or otherwise. We liked financial. And then we're also, we've also applied for one grant already, and we're seeking another grant to help, so, I think it's a good, good possibility that we'll be, um, under construction in twenty-eighteen still.
Sounds great, thanks.
Anybody else got any?
Just a quick comment back to the, uh, tax credit, uh, issue. We've seen in, in, in my day job, we've seen a decrease in interest in tax credits because of the changes to the, um, to the budget, uh, and to the tax code nationally. They've made them a little less attractive, so there's, that's why there's been a little bit of a contraction in the, in the eligibility and, um, so. We're seeing actually more interest in historic tax credits, which we addressed last week, so our last council meeting, so, that's just a little food for thought, I guess.
Okay.
Scott, I was wondering if you could talk about the Swinging Bridge a little bit. Uh, I believe we got on the national registry.
I can, let me, but I better find my notes so I don't speak, uh, speak out of turn. Peterson is here, so she might help me, but we, we were successful. We went through the process, um, which goes through a couple different boards, and then goes to the state historic, uh, panel, and so we were successful in getting, um, the state and now national.
We got state.
The state so far.
We got state, okay.
We got state. That's a precursor to national, so national's on the way. I don't have a timeline for when that might come through, um, but it's typically probable if you get on the state that you'll make national, so we'll see.
Excellent.
Anybody else got anything else?
I do just wanna thank Bill Lubish for his, uh, service on the fire department. He's one of my constituents, and it's always fun to have him stop by when you're outside shoveling snow or doing other projects and kinda hear his updates of what he's got going on and, and what the fire department's been up to, so thank you, Bill, for your service.
Okay. Okay, move on here to closed session. We're gonna recess in a closed session per Wisconsin state statutes for the following purposes. Uh, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility to wit the city administrator. Uh, the next one is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, to which the purch- purchase and sale of property in River Falls Industrial Park. And last one is recurring from conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning, concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, on which it is or is likely to be involved to wit. Update on the retaliatory appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We move into closed session.
Second.
Christie?
Odine.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.